The second is from the city council meeting on July 2nd.
Motion to approve both.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Hayes, seconded by Vice Mayor Love. I would ask if there's any additions or corrections requested. Seeing no one with any, all in favor of approving both sets, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Minutes are unanimously approved. Now we'll move to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where you can speak to items that are on the agenda. There are also two public hearings this evening. The first is on plan, adopting a plan of services for the annexation of 77.55 acres, located north of Hicks Lane, east of Dobbin's Pike. And then also the same property, authorizing the annexed property to be indicated on official, basically annexing the land. So there's two public hearings. So if you want to speak to that item, or one angle of those items, you may do so under public hearing. You can also do it under public recognition on agenda-related items. It's your choice. But right now, it's public recognition on agenda-related items. You'll have five minutes to speak. We ask that you give us your name, and we need your address for the record, please. So right now, oh, and at the end of the meeting, there is a time for public recognition on non-agenda-related items. But right now, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open.
Good evening. Joanne Bates, 120 Hicks Lane, since you mentioned the annexation. I am speaking about item two. One good, one as well. My neighbor, Mr. Juan Calderon, has been a good neighbor. He put up sturdy fences. He kept a fields mode. His cows are content. And only one time has a calf been loose, and my husband helped Mr. Calderon get the calf back into the proper area. He asked my husband, how do you know about cows? Because most people in trying to get cows back want to yell and scream and wave their arms wildly to direct cows back to where they know they came from. And if you leave them alone, they'll go back. My husband responded, well, we have a few cows. Annexation brings a fear of what's been requested for this parcel before. It was a request for rezoning from agriculture to R8, and the request for high-density housing in an area where homes are on one acre. Parcels are zoned to R40 and R15. Homes have larger acreage than they continue to be in the county as we are. There's even a horse farm present. Here are some facts that you need to be aware of. The parcel borders a narrow, one-lane country road that has no shoulder and no markings. Recent paving and a cut-through from Hicks Lane to a county maintenance area allows large county maintenance vehicles to travel that lane daily. And during school days, up to 14 school buses travel that lane twice daily, serving Benny Bill's Elementary and Schaefer Middle School. Traffic is already an issue on Dobbin's Pike at peak hours, especially the 180 days that Sumner County schools are in session. And selfishly, I'm kind of concerned about stormwater runoff, because see, after a big rain, I already have a large quantity of water running through my property. And my home is downhill from this development that the applicant wants to annex. And my question, you know, where's all that water going to go, except downhill? I have four questions for you. I'd love to have answered tonight, but I know it'll be after the meeting, or perhaps I can call tomorrow. The city's own planning commission voted no previously on this. What changed? Is it the fact that the owner, Mr. Calderon, and the applicant, Mr. Reggie Mudd, presented no plan for the property at this time? Question two, previously, the city council voted no for annexation. If you vote yes tonight, what changed? And should it be annexed and then a plan submitted? Does it go back to the departments again for a plan of service, and back to the planning commission? And one last question. As the parcel touches and is next to Triple Creek Park, has the city council explored the option of purchasing this property for the critical need of expanded park facilities for the city? I've seen the lines of cars exiting Triple Creek after a ball tournament. I've heard the multiple comments on how great market in the park is, but it could be expanded. I've spoken with parents who can now take their child, previously unable to play on a city playground, to swing at Miracle Park. And I recently read that not everybody who wanted to park at the park to view the fireworks could get in. I've heard the need for additional soccer fields. And to be truthful, a city owes its residents the availability of high-quality parks, facilities, programs that empower the residents and visitors. In watching the online parks meeting Sunday, I realized not everybody can live in a development that has the amenities like a pool and a park, and not everybody can get a membership to a country club. Gallatin's got an excellent beginning on the parks, but as noted at every single council meeting, Gallatin is growing. The last time I spoke about parks before the city council was with Velma Brinkley and others from our water aerobics class, and we stood before the city council and spoke in favor of building the Tommy Garrett Aquatics Facility. Wow, hasn't that been an asset for Gallatin? Thank you for your time, your answers to your questions. I realize maybe not tonight, and for your service. For you see, Gallatin is where my dad, Joe Turner, grew up, and it was to Gallatin that he brought our family back after he retired from a lifelong career in the military. It's where I taught school for 30 years. It's where my children were born, and where a long list of family members are buried in the city cemetery. Please make sure that you keep up with your true grit and amazing grace attributes that you proclaim on the city's economic development website. Abundant trees, rolling hills, sweeping green pastures, and the curves of long driveways. That site said nothing about what Pete Seeger sang about when he sang, "Little boxes on a hillside, little boxes made of tiki-taki, little boxes on a hillside," that all look just the same. Thank you.
Good evening. Karen Bookout, 1006 Quailwood Cove, Gallatin. I'd first like to say how nice it was to see you, Mayor Brown, Councilman Jevance, and Councilman Allison, over the weekend at Planapalooza. And thank you to Brian Rose and TPUDC for putting together what I thought was a really great weekend. I had the pleasure of attending numerous sessions, including spending several hours with residence planning official and TPUDC staff discussing ideas. It was refreshing and really exciting to feel a part of the creative process, and I really enjoyed it. It was disappointing, however, to see many council members not in attendance. Had you attended, you would have heard discussions about the property proposed for annexation on Hicks Lane, among other things, as well as the need and desire for retaining properties such as this for vital green space. You would also have heard in the TPUDC presentations by Brian Wright, numerous mentions of the importance of retaining green space, excuse me, retaining existing green spaces and trees. I will go so far as to say, your lack of participation begs the question. Will you continue to operate as you have been for so long, simply rubber-stamping developments, not considering the negative impacts your decisions have made and will continue to have on this town? Or will you, in good faith, make your decisions in consideration of the comments, opinions, and desires of not only your constituents, but business owners and developers, as expressed during Planapalooza, even before any zoning or code changes are finalized? The National Institute of Health states the following regarding green spaces. There has been considerable work done in recent years exploring the value of urban green space for health and well-being. Green spaces provide environmental benefits through their effects on negating urban heat, offsetting greenhouse gas emissions, and attenuating stormwater. They also have direct health benefits by providing residents spaces for physical activity and social interaction, and allowing psychological restoration to take place. Challenges exist, such as competing urban planning priorities, economic considerations, and market forces. There is thus a need for urban planning to match the health benefits sought with the needs of the community and the functionality that the green space will serve. TWRA has identified the unnamed tributary to Town Creek on the Hicks property as vital streamside and other wildlife habitat, and it's suggested to remain undisturbed. That said, TDEC water quality assessments consistently show Town Creek has biological criteria considerably lower than regional goals, including excessive sedimentation, elevated nutrients at an elevated E. coli levels, indicating there is fecal matter in Town Creek, and recreation uses in the creek are not recommended. Town Creek, the same creek everyone driving through town sees. Town Creek, the same creek folks walking along that greenway enjoy listening to, perhaps letting their dogs get a drink of, from has poop in it. Excuse me. Now let me paint a prettier picture. The property on Hicks Lane is magnificent. It is heavily wooded, providing much-needed shade, meadows, wet springs, and, as mentioned, a stream emptying into Town Creek. Degradation of this land or stream will result in further damaging Town Creek, and ultimately further damaging Old Hickory Lake and Reservoir, where we get our drinking water. As mentioned previously by Mayor Brown and some council members, this is an ideal property to add to Triple Creek Park. If the city enters into such a project, I encourage you to consider leaving the property much in its natural state, only creating trails and equal, walking trails and equine trails. This could be the crown jewel in what is already a beloved and well-used Triple Creek Park. Lastly, as another speaker mentioned, within recent years, this property came up for annexation and development consideration. It is my understanding that, at the time, planning officials recommended this property was not appropriate for development. Excuse me. Accordingly, city council agreed and voted no on the annexation and development. Please consider again voting no on this annexation and future development, and consider yes to creating additional natural park space within this property. Thank you.
My name's Laina Marler, 1512 Cherokee Road. Let's try this without glasses. Okay, so about 20 years ago, in 2006, I sold a farm to a lady that moved here from California with her horses. She bought a beautiful log home and acreage out on Harsh Lane. So I told her, as I was leaving, she was moving in, I said, I hope that you love living here in Gallatin on your farm. She said, I will for a while, but I'll have to move again in 10 or 20 years. So I asked her why. She replied, it happened in California, and it will happen here. They'll just keep, excuse me, I said, they will just keep building and building, and then I will move farther out again. At that time, I remember thinking, no way, not in Gallatin. Well, guess what? That's exactly what's happened. So my question is this, why not start saying no? Is the eventual plan to just keep moving the circle out bigger and bigger? I understand the concept of urban sprawl and wanting to contain it, but you aren't. When does the annexation stop? I understand that a landowner has a right to ask for annexation, but it's not a right that they get it. You don't have to say yes. Don't you believe you have an obligation to consider people that live in an area like Joanne, and people that have lived here for a long time? You voted against Hicks Lane annexation two years ago, and I hope you do so again tonight. I think her ideas about, you know, going into Triple Creek and all that, I think that's a fabulous idea. The next thing on the agenda I want to address real quickly is out my way on Woods Ferry Road. These people literally had their area blown up with woods crossing. When you go by the rolling hills that were there, they're flattened now. There's no trees. It breaks my heart to drive by there. It's shameful to even consider more development on a small, curvy country road that, by the way, floods. Not to mention, it'll be a major cut-through from Peach Valley. It's time to vote no on this most recent annexation request on Woods Ferry. And on the next neighborhood I want to talk about, I recently met a couple that moved here, and they brought a home in a 30-year-old neighborhood off Nichols Lane. They brought on the corner of Bryan Court and Connie Drive. Their home was hit when the last tornado came through. As they literally were working on replacing the roof and the damage, the zoning signs went up, right behind their house. If you vote yes, and I know that it's already been annexed, but if you vote yes as the plan stands, they will have traffic cutting right by their house on the corner there so that people can take a shortcut to Lot 4. I believe this will be a cut-through, because the Collector Road, or Connector or Collector or whatever, will encounter a school zone in the mornings at Sumner Academy, a lot of traffic on Nichols Lane. So I think it's human nature that people are probably going to cut through to get closer to Lot 4 Road. I feel like another peninsula of Elvedere cut-through situation may be getting set up. So I think it's time to vote no on this neighborhood in Nichols Lane, and take a look into how better to protect people that live there from a traffic nightmare. Not that there can't be a neighborhood, but maybe figure out a better way to not have it go right by their house. So many of us, over the last two years, beg you to say no to the banks of Lots 4. You told us you had to fill the donut hole, and fill it, you have, in two short years. We now, if all gets approved, will have 1,405 homes in this area, and that does not include the Woods Ferry development that's on the agenda tonight. Please stop drawing the circle bigger and bigger every week, because in creating donut holes that then you say you have to fill. So don't you see we're losing our land? We're losing our character. We're losing our green spaces in our farms. The University of Tennessee stated that Sumner County is losing their farmland at triple the average of Tennessee counties, 16,000 acres from 2011 to 2022. Triple the average of TV counties, sorry, Tennessee counties. Let that sink in. I'll close by saying that I keep seeing interviews that claim that Citizens Against Development, that we all just want it like it was in the past. Please understand that we know it'll never be like that. We're not against growth. We're for growth that embraces the beautiful land and the charm of our city that we're blessed with. Our fear is that if we don't rethink how the growth happens, we lose the special place we call home in this beautiful state. We've become a generic suburb to Nashville. This desire to keep our charm and character was voiced by many at the Planapalooza event last weekend. I hope that going forward, the council considers the comments and results of this last weekend. Please, please preserve Gallatin and keep it special. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Brown, distinguished council members. My name is Joe Johnson. I reside at 170 Dobbin's Pike, which is on a back corner of my property on the north side, borders the people that live on Hicks Lane. I too am concerned with the annexation. I have several questions, and as Ms. Bates said, I'll probably have to wait till tomorrow or whenever to find out these answers, but I would like to put them in place at this time. How will the annexation affect us as citizens and people in the county? Will we be grandfathered in? Will our taxes go up because of the annexation? They've already reassessed our property at double or more than double this year, and I'm just wondering if they annex that property, will our property taxes go up with that also? Again, the greenways, if you've ever driven down Hicks Lane in the wintertime, it is a gorgeous, beautiful time when the snow is on the ground. That creek that runs through is just beautiful to see. And we keep taking away all our green space and all our place for animals to hide or go and be in their habitat, which is causing more animals to come into private property and city domains. I just can't understand why we would want to add another 198 or so houses to a property adjoining us that we now have on Albert Gallatin Pike in the Nexus subdivision. Approximately 1,350 houses are going to be built, and it's single-family dwellings that will be built there, and that will mean another roughly 2,700 vehicles. What is planned for traffic control? Yesterday, when they were working on Dobbin's Pike and rerouted for the detour down Hicks Lane, my neighbor's mailbox that is on vacation right now, that I'm taking, looking after his property for him, was knocked down by, because that road is so narrow that they can't get through. I would appreciate, and hopefully, please vote no on this annexation. Thank you so much for your time.
Anyone else that wishes to speak?
Lisa McDole, 1031 East Nichols Circle. And forgive me, but I thought he wasn't going to be able to be here tonight, so I forwarded my comments to the council and to Mayor Brown. But I think some things need to be said out loud. So bear with me while I read this. After last week's work session, I had questions. These are questions I would expect our planning and council members would also want to have answers to, but I haven't heard them voiced yet. My first question is, if this development is actually, I'm sorry, I'm addressing item six, which is Nichols West rezoning. If this development is actually 2.6 units per acre, why not zone it to R20, from R40 to R20? R20 for planned residential developments has a maximum permitted density per gross acre of 2.75. 2.6 units certainly fits into that R20 zone. Yes, I realize the builders will have to give up some dollars in homes to create larger lots. This may be a good place to note that the developers have already saved thousands of dollars because planning has waived the 70% brick requirement. If I understand correctly, the lot sizes for R20 are a minimum 15,000 square feet. That would definitely reduce the crowded housing and increase true green space, true green space. I think the only reason that there would be a need for R8 zoning is if the development will never be built as proposed on the existing plan. Otherwise, the need for R8 makes it appear there might be a plan for further rezoning to R8 PRD, mixed-use building types. Rezoning to R20 is more respectful of the surrounding residents in the area, and R8 is definitely not needed there. Second question is, how are the goals stated in Plan Gallatin being fulfilled, as noted in the developer's master plan? Goal 2, objective 2.2, conserve open space, farmland, scenic view sheds, and unique natural features. Several of the open spaces contain water-retention ponds, think mosquitoes, or other items that make it not a true green space. It appears much of the open space is buffer, which either joins or is part of private yards, making them inaccessible to other residents. Doesn't it make more sense to provide homeowners enough land to have their own swing set, or plant a small garden if they want? That's real green space. Objective 3, goal 3, objective 3.1, incentive housing options to meet the needs of individuals and families in any stage of life. $600,000 starting prices certainly do not include any stage of life. As the developer said, they are aimed at second- and third-time homeowners. Goal 3, objective 3.2, shape the built environment to encourage active and healthy lifestyles. But there's no playground. Well, I guess walking a half a mile to a playground is part of this goal. I feel the need to point out that the developer, when asked about a playground, first said there was a playground, but when questioned to further show the location, admitted there wasn't one. That seems a little disingenuous to me. Goal 3, objective 3.4, foster an atmosphere of inclusion to enhance community cohesion. I kind of don't even know what that means. Goal 4, objective 4.2, provide access to affordable and high-performance utility service. Okay, I guess one out of three goals is better than none. But if we met one out of four employment goals, we'd be sent packing. We'd be job hunting. I heard someone say that neighborhoods of the '70s aren't really possible because of the cost of land. The older subdivisions in Gallatin have few to no homes for sale. Granted, they are in the $350,000 to $400,000 price range, but a home for $600,000 surely deserves a larger lot. In Nichols Circle, $650,000 to $700,000 will purchase a large home with one to three acres of land. The one thing it will no longer provide is a country-in-the-city-limits lifestyle, if we keep rezoning to R8. I know I'm old and times change, but at 25, I was able to purchase a home as a single woman. I want to close with saying the storyline that people don't want land is a fairy tale. What isn't a fairy tale is that greed is creating an environment in which our children may never own a home. Thank you.
Good evening. Anthony Lee, 287 Walper Drive. Here, eight-year resident of Twin Eagles, here to speak about 021027, which is the Dottie Lane extension to Douglas Lane. This road has been appointed for contention since Randy Jones had annexed his land in the city behind Beacon Lane to start building back there, and that was in March of 2021. There are 469 homes in Twin Eagles development that can be only accessed by one entrance or exit. This interest and/or exit was blocked by flooding and road repairs just this spring in 2024. In the event that this exit is blocked by some other natural or man-made disaster, if needed, how will emergency services get to the residents of Twin Eagles? And at the same instance, if this interest is blocked, how will these residents get to a safer place or anywhere else? Since I've moved into Twin Eagles, which was in late 2015, approximately 196 homes have been built. That's an average of about 22 homes a year. There are approximately 30 home sites that, on Dottie Lane and Maya Marie, that the developer is waiting to build on. As an outside observer, it appears that Jones Brothers Construction finishes their developments in phases. This means the average to finish the current phase would be about a year and three months. If, if we allow the residents of Twin Eagles to assume that this council will vote in favor of Randy Jones' construction and allow them to build 88 homes before the road is built, we can assume the 30 lots that are still empty, that need built on, it will take over five years for the Dottie Lane extension to Douglas Lane to even be started or considered at all. I ask this council to pass the proposed housing plot only if the Dottie Lane extension to Douglas Lane entrance is completed by the builder at the time that he has built half of the proposed housings that he's proposing now. As city staff has asked, this would be following the ruling by the council in March of 2021, the current planning guidance, and would be in the interest of safety through Twin Eagles and Gallatin's residents. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Reed, I'm a resident of, a longtime resident of Twin Eagles subdivision. I strongly recommend that city council members require Randy Jones' construction to build a second entrance to Twin Eagles subdivision, and that construction should begin in the next three months. My predecessor mentioned how many houses are there. And shortly after I moved into Twin Eagles, it was a January night, it was about zero degrees forecast. At 4:30, the electricity went off. A dump truck had taken down all the power lines up close to the entrance to Highway 25. Workers could not get home to their houses. People who live there could not leave, and it was like five hours before we got power. So now, we've got hundreds more houses, and I feel like Randy, he's gotten a pass long enough that this second entrance should be built now. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items?
John Alexander, 780 Anthony Street. I just want to address number 12 on here. Over maybe three years ago, we voted on this, and maybe we should have or should have not Over maybe three years ago, we voted on this, and maybe we should have or should have not put a percentage on it, we did not. What we actually said was 88 homes to be built. This road needs to be built.
Let me correct you, I think item 13 is what you're referencing.
I say 12?
Say 12.
Okay, 13, yes, the last one, number 13. Now whether we did, whether we should or shouldn't, our word should be our bond. At that particular time, over three years ago, we did say after Mr. Jones completed 88 homes were completed, that the road would be built. We also talked about some roads that would maybe alleviate some of the congestion for the resident. We talked about Akon Way, we talked about maybe Cumberland Point being a gravel road going to Red River to alleviate. But we did vote, in our second motion, that we would allow him to do 88 homes before he built the road. Any questions? Thank you, Noah.
May anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on the gender-related items? Okay, seeing no one, we'll declare public recognition on the gender-related items closed. I'll move now to mayor's comments. First, I do want to say a big thank you to all of those who attended and certainly worked the Plantapalooza this past weekend. I think Brian Rose and Jeff Henshaw were there a lot, a lot of the rest of the planning staff was too. TPUDC, I thought Brian Wright did a fabulous job. There was some good feedback, some good visuals, some good conversation. Overall, a great event, as always with those kinds of things. I wish that we'd had a better turnout, but that's pretty typical, so I understand. Nonetheless, I think we're on a path to get our zoning ordinance updated, and I think we will come up with something very, very good. Events upcoming this Thursday, it's Third Thursday on May, it's Tony Logan, the 814 performing. That starts at 6:30, it's on the square. Kids' summer movie series is at the Palace at 10:00 AM on Friday. On the 20th, you've got the Car Cruise Inn at the Civic Center. Saturdays, continue the market day at the Gallatin Farmers Market. Sundays have the Flower Market on the Downtown Square that happens from 3:00 to 6:00 on Sunday afternoons for the next several Sundays. The following week, on the 25th, 26th, 27th, I think are the three days, it's the Trans Amorama happening out of Airport Road at, oh, 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 I've gone blank on the graveyard, second gen graveyard. I went blank on the business name, but that's a great event where transams come in from all over, transams and Camaros come in from all over the country. So if you're an enthusiast, you might like to see that. On the 26th is the grand opening of the station, the home, new home at the Chamber of Commerce. That's from 7:30 AM until 3:00 PM. There's a ribbon cutting scheduled in there. Also that morning, the first event hosted there officially will be the Good Morning Gallatin, a legislative and civic engagement series at the station, and I believe Stuart McQuarter is the guest, this first event at the station. Ms. McCollough is nodding, I should be right about that then. David Kellogg's birthday on the 3rd of August, and the start of Grace and Grub Week, Restaurant Week, if you will, starts on the 3rd. The Breakfast at the American Legion is that day. And then mark your calendars for August 6th, which will be the National Night Out, sponsored by the Gallatin Police Department, and that will be held at the Pavilion on Smith Street. And always a fun time for kids to go and visit with their local police officers and get some treats for back to school. I think that is it, under mayor's comments, and we will move now to the regular agenda. The first item is the public hearing on resolution R2406-51, and I'll invite Vice Mayor Love to introduce that.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, adopting a plan of services for the annexation of a 77.55 plus or minus acre parcel located north of Hicks Lane and east of Dobbin's Pike and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
The public hearing is now open, and you may come speak to it if you so desire. See no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I'll declare public hearing on resolution R2406-51 closed. Move on to public hearing on resolution R2406-52, and Vice Mayor Love again to introduce.
This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, annexing a 77.55 plus or minus acre parcel located north of Hicks Lane and east of Dobbin's Pike into the City of Gallatin, authorizing the annexed property to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, assigning the annexed area to a council district, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is also a public hearing.
Public hearing on resolution R2406-52. Anyone wishing to speak may do so at this time. Again, I see no one indicating they wish to speak. I'll declare public hearing on resolution R2406-52 closed. We'll move now to item three, which is second reading on ordinance 02405-25, and for that, Councilman Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, rezoning a 1.19 plus or minus acre lot from the CS Commercial Services District to the Core Commercial District located north of West Shell Street and west of Southwater Avenue, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Carter, a second by Councilman Juveant. Opening the floor for any discussion. Councilman Juveant.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a great use of the space, and that's what we need there. I think we need to emphasize on revitalizing Southwater down there, so yeah, that's a great, great project.
Anyone with questions, comments? Ready to vote? This is second reading on ordinance 02405-25. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Moving to item number four, which is first reading on ordinance 02406-30, Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance appropriating, or first reading appropriating $50,000 for the golf course clubhouse renovations. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Thanelle. Any questions, any discussion on this? This is first reading on ordinance 02406-30. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Item five is first reading on ordinance 02407-31. Vice Mayor Love is recognized.
I think everybody will like this one. This is first reading appropriating $7,500 in donations from the American Kennel Club. Adopt a canine cop grant for a police canine. I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Love, second by Councilman Carter. Interruption by Councilman Hayes. Just kidding. These are always fun things to vote on, so it's nice to have something like this on the agenda. This is first reading on ordinance, oh, any questions, anyone? I didn't think so. First reading on ordinance 02407-31. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Congratulations, Gallatin Police Department Chief Bandy. Item six is first reading on ordinance 02407-32. Councilman Juveant.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, rezoning 53.87 plus or minus acres from the R40 low-density residential district and R20 low-density residential district to the R8 PRD medium-density planned residential development district with a preliminary master development plan for Nichols West, and I move to deny the reasoning.
Motion to deny. Okay, the motion to deny dies for lack of a second, which would put us on... Another motion from someone else.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Councilman Hayes. A second by Councilman Carter. That does open the floor for discussion. This is first reading on ordinance 02407-32. Questions? I see Mr. Rose poised to assist with any questions. Councilman Juveant.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, we go back to the same thing that the banks, the reasoning doesn't fit the area, and you know, some of you were there when, actually, yesterday, we saw a map of, presented during the Zoko, a map of what was going on in the zoning, and everything around there had the same color, and there was a different color than the eye. So that was a pretty nice graphic. Same thing, you know, open space again. What's really interesting is that on the plans, on the PMDP, a few of the retention ponds were used at open space, have retaining walls. So again, if we go back to the definition of open space, we're supposed to be usable if there is retaining walls, how can you use it? So I think that should be removed from the open space, because that, as I mean, even the normal, your normal requirement of open space that people can use as a swimming pool, if there is a wall, they can go there, so that would change the requirement. Another question I had, there's discrepancy somewhere, is that they talk about street trees, and they say they should be provided within the eight-foot grass strip along the main spider rod, and that was a part of the packet, and on Exhibit B, they talk about five-foot grass strip. So which one we're going to use, the five or the eight? That's a question I would like an answer to. Again, you know, we had a lot of people coming there. I know it's going to pass because that's part of a big plan to cram plenty of stuff there, but I would vote no because, again, it's a wrong, that doesn't follow the intent of the zoning ordinance. That's all I have.
Well, I didn't understand what he was meaning by the five or the eight trees, Pascal, I'm sorry.
So on one part of the package, he said that we need to have eight-foot strip and trees, and on the Exhibit B, he said that we need five-foot strips, so that's what he said the package of last week, that was on page 50 of the package of last week. But that's probably not the same page in there.
Maybe we should have a representative answer to these things.
I would ask Mr. Rose if he can, first of all, any other questions, any discussion?
Well, I was going to say something else, but first.
You can get Jim to come up here if you need to.
You guys will, but...
I'm sorry, I don't have the page numbers as you kind of had them in the packet back then. Do you know the plan page numbers by chance? And I would assume it's either a typo on that, or that maybe as you're referring to different streets, there may be different grass strips for different streets, so.
Yeah, just have the packet.
Exhibit B in this week's agenda is page 42.
The eight-foot strip, and we may have inconsistently labeled this somewhere, the eight-foot strip is along the greenway, along the main collector. There's a five-foot grass strip on other streets along the frontage. That's the difference. And the eight-foot strip along the greenway is so we can plant trees in between the greenway and the road. The trees that get planted on the five-foot strip don't get planted in the five-foot strip, they get planted behind as yard trees, but they have the same effect.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
This is the one with 139 single-family homes, which seems like a nice development to me. There's no townhouses involved. I was at Plantapalooza on Sunday, and they mentioned, which I hadn't really thought of in this context when I brought up a playground, that some amenities are more suited for certain developments than others, and since this one is described as one that people would be probably freeing up their starter home and going to a second or third home, they'll probably be older. So really, a playground to me may not be something that's as desirable as using it as a, something just for people to gather or whatever, but I think it sounds much more reasonable than many of the plans that come up.
Mr. Rose, would you be comfortable answering the question that was asked by Ms. McDonald regarding the R20 zoning versus the... Do you recall that question and why we went with, well, not we, but why one type zoning is suitable versus another?
Yes, so with the R20 zoning, you're required a minimum 20,000 square foot lot. That lot requirement is difficult to attain if you're looking to obviously be able to build more homes, right? And provide the open space requirement. It would significantly, you can't get that kind of density when you have the requirement for the open space and everything else. And so they look to do the PRD zoning with that so they can decrease the lot size in order to still be able to attain even close to that amount of density. You'd be looking at probably more like 1 point, you know, 1 point something, 1.45 dwelling units per acre, instead of something closer to two dwelling units per acre because of the lot size that... And so they offset that by asking for the PRD and being able to decrease that lot size minimum size requirement, if that makes sense.
Brian, I have a question for you, just in response to Ms. McDonald's concern. Does going from R20 to R8, does it open up future zoning possibilities? Should that be, is that something of, for those who would want only low-density, would that make a difference?
So this particular request, again, because it's got the PRD zoning with it, would make it so that the layout as it's proposed transfers along with that rezoning request. So whoever may own the property in the future, if this person decided to sell it without developing it even, there would still be an approved plan for that property that goes along with the zoning now. So whatever that proposal is, if they wanted to change it, they would have to come back through a process with the city in order to do that, so.
So just helping me clarify, the R8 rezoning wouldn't necessarily mean that this would be open, they would have to go through the process once again. True, okay.
Anyone else with any questions, comments? Anything else you feel like you want to add, or you want to add?
Yeah, I would like to ask one more question to Brian, if it's appropriate for him to give commentary on this. Could you just give your opinion how this would fit into those overall goals talked about with the different character, you know, character zones and our aspirations as a city moving forward?
Sure, and I know the staff report had referenced a few of the goals that the city has in the comprehensive plan. Typically, you're not going to see every goal met by any development. You know, there may be, there is a long list of different types of goals and things that are in the comprehensive plan that we look to try to achieve by the development that's proposed, and so we highlight a few of those that are being met by the proposed development. There may be other goals in the, in the... There may be other goals in the comprehensive plan that wouldn't be quite as well met. And I'd have to go back and check which goals she had referenced as to, you know, if those were part of our report or not. But I do know there were, you know, a handful of goals in our staff report that were listed as, as being addressed by this particular proposed development.
And, excuse me, and among those, tree retention, I think that, as I was looking through this plan, I felt like that's been considered. Would you agree or not on that?
I would, I would say so. If you look in the, at the proposed plan that they have, there are several trees showing along all the streets, and they also would be doing their very best to preserve the existing tree lines along the properties and things like that. So, by all means, I think that addresses that goal.
Thank you.
Anyone else with comments or questions? Mr. Juwans.
Thank you, Mayor, because we are asking question. I think, Jim, you said you had a traffic study made. Was that forwarded to planning and engineering?
It's been forwarded to engineering. Engineering's consultant has looked at it.
What was the result for Nichols Lane?
Recommends, I'm sorry, recommends a left turn lane on Nichols Lane. We have commented to engineering, even though it didn't recommend this, the new collector road that comes from the south, that we feel like it might be appropriate to put a left turn in, and engineering and their consultants are looking at that. But we've stated on the record that we'll provide those improvements.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, you feel as if you're ready to vote. This is first reading on ordinance O2407-32. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no.
No.
It does pass first reading six to one. Item seven is first reading on ordinance O2407-33. Councilman Juwans.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an ordinance of the City of Gallatin from the County of Tennessee, reasoning six parcel totaling 5.96 plus or minus acres from mixed-use district to the PGC Plan General Commercial District with an amended preliminary master development plan for Sand Creek President Park condo storage. And I move to approve.
Motion by Councilman Juwans. Second by Vice Mayor Love, opening the floor for discussion.
I had a few questions about that. Is anybody here that can answer those?
I think I saw in the back, and then someone near the front, so.
Andy.
Sending.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend rules, allow the guests to speak. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, gentlemen, if you would introduce yourself for the record, please, and I think you kind of know what some of the questions were from the work session, so you all roll with it first, and then we'll ask if there's any further.
Gotcha. This is Brad with, Brad Bork with Green LID Design. Some of the comments that came from work session, one of them was about noise. There will be some type of regulation. I've seen a draft that they're working on right now that will include some type of noise, you know, to limit the amount of noise. There's also something, there is a, there is something in our, in the ordinance that says you can't sound your horns, racing motors, causing screeching or squealing of tires. Those kind of things would not be tolerated in this type of condo, car condo place. For the repairs, right now, there's not really, we're not really looking at changing what they can do, but they are limited to what they can do to their personal vehicle. So, they're not gonna be, you know, doing oil changes for their friends or anything like that. It'll be all for personal use and for personal reasons. I don't know if there was any other questions other than that, but those were, I think, one of the big ones.
So, it's just not, it's not a storage, it's a car community where guys can go in there and do things that they want to their car. One reason I brought this up is, I've been in my business right there for 40 years on Gallatin Road. I've got a neighborhood that resides behind me that's probably 200 yards away, the nearest house, I guess. Well, for years, I kept a piston compressor out there, and, you know, and I had no idea that it was bothering the neighbors until they come to me. So, you know, I went to a screw compressor, which is quiet. So, I know if this is gonna be a do-it-yourself, they're gonna have compressors, they're gonna sit outside, they're gonna sit inside. Are we gonna hear that?
I'm gonna, I'll also introduce the client here behind me that.
I'm not against the project, I'm for it, but I know what kind of questions these developments.
I'd also ask, like, what kind of facility is on site for, like, oil, you know? I mean.
Well, they'll have to bottle their oil. I mean, they might be able to re-burn it like I do, or they'll have somebody that'll come and pick it up. But, you know, excuse me.
And they're not gonna drain it out right there.
No, they certainly wouldn't do anything like that. You know, even though that this facility is designed for.
We've had it in our stormwater system, that's why I feel compelled to bring it up.
Well, I mean, it's more than just a storage, you're calling it a car condo, so.
I know, and I appreciate what you said about, because I was taking it for one thing entirely, and then when you started bringing up all the other stuff.
I just feel that.
We do have a noise ordinance that has to be abided by.
I'm Armando Estrada from Sand Creek Partners. So, we don't have anything outside of regular noise regulations from the ordinances in the city about noise. But if we need to put something into the HOA documents, we'd welcome that. So, if there needs to be, you know, a timeframe with which they can do some of that, and then on top of that, we have the ordinance from the city, which, as Brad mentioned, regulates any noise that's, you know, hurts anybody's lifestyle or their living area. In terms of the disposal of oil, again, it is zero commercial activity, there's nothing for hire here, it is all private, so they have to take care of that themselves. And what we've seen at other locations is, though there is some of those guys and some of those folks that are out there making noise, predominantly, it is a degree of hanging out, looking at the cars, chatting a lot. It's not to say there's zero work, but a lot, and a lot of the stuff inside, some people put in the lifts to bring up their vehicles, and they get under there and do that work many times with the doors closed. And that's another thing we could add in. We could say, if you are going to use one of these devices, you must do it with the door closed or something. We want to be good neighbors. We develop the balance of the project, so we're, you know, we help put in those townhomes that are next to us.
Will these units be air-conditioned?
Yes.
Okay. They're probably gonna keep their doors shut.
They can, yeah, we'll put two fans and a mini-split, and that will allow them to keep the doors closed.
If this passes first reading, I would really like to see some regulations that you're at least considering putting in place, because this is really unique for us, and I appreciate what you said about developing the townhomes, because I didn't know that. You know, that you were the same person, so you are gonna have to be considerate of the neighbors, but.
Correct. What particular ones are you looking for?
Huh?
What particular ones would you like to see? Because I think we'd enumerate them in the HOA.
Well, I mean, I just think activities that are allowed or prohibited.
Okay.
And, you know, what that, what you may draw out for that. And I'm sure that you've gotten examples from similar facilities that you're following, and so it would just kind of help me have a better sense for when we get questions and we kind of know we've approved to allow to happen at this facility and not, doors open six months from now, and we're like, whoa, we didn't know that.
Well, you know, one thing that I want to address is compressors. If they're gonna be screwed, if they're gonna be pissed, if they're inside, if they're outside. Then when you get into racks, you're gonna get into gases. You're gonna have a settling, you're gonna have oxygen, some form outside, some people put them inside, make sure they're tied down. You see what I'm, where I'm going with this? You're gonna have welders, you're gonna have all kinds of tooling there.
There may be limitations on things like welders, because, again, that would fall under a commercial or industrial use, so I don't believe that that's gonna, that can't be allowed.
And I don't think you want certain things stored inside, and you certainly don't want them stored outside.
And these, these things that will not be allowed.
These buildings are metal buildings, and they're gonna be, there'll be fireproof between the units.
There's fireproof between the units, but I don't think we've decided whether it's gonna be stick frame or CMU or what's gonna be behind there.
One reason, you know, I had a car that somebody left a key on the other day, and when they did, it stuck to points, and the wiring caught on fire. Thank God, we got it put out. But you mess with people's cars, and when they're storming, when they're running and letting them sit there, and you got other people's got collections all next to them, what about fires? Or is it gonna be sprinkled?
I think going back to Mayor Brown's statement, there are gonna be limitations on things that can be stored in there, whether it's through, enumerating it through our documents or already city regulations. I know staff had the question about, or let us know about sprinklers, for example. So, every bit of this has to be sprinkled. So, that kind of goes back to your question about the safety of the.
We'll see what you come up with. Thank you.
What's been your most often complaint on these developments?
We really haven't had much of a complaint. Generally, people are storing their units. This isn't, has not been the type of client that goes out there and makes a lot of noise. Yes, they're doing some tooling in there, but it's a lot of showing their units, and there's a lot of storing the RVs and the boats and toys. So, we, there has not been complaints about noise, for example.
You have one of these units now in?
Not in middle Tennessee, there are some in other areas.
Do you have anything adjacent to residential areas?
Yes.
Mr. Juwans.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand the concerns, but I have an issue with asking to put rules, because of what I understood, they're gonna be privately owned, run under an HOA, and how can we do that? We don't, we don't ask any development to look at the HOA and to put different rules, and what's the difference of people who's.
We actually do look at HOA documents sometimes for certain developments.
Yeah.
For HPRs and for different things, to see what they're gonna be. And now, we wouldn't be approving or disproving those. I think it's just asked to see what is allowed and what isn't. We couldn't change those. I think he's asked for input, but we certainly are not going to take on that liability to approve or disapprove the documents.
Because that doesn't, for me, that's the same difference that my neighbor was a garage with a lift and would work on his car, or anybody who's can do something on his car at the home. So, we have, we have noise ordinance, and I think that should be enough. That's my, I like, I like the idea for sure. I think it's needed, because the more, the more we see all this development with one car garage, people who are car enthusiasts like Sean, and they use the car garage in this development as a storage unit, they need somewhere to go to, to do their stuff. So, I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance O2407-33. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Item A, this is resolution R2406-58. Councilman Allison.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution, resolution accepting public improvements by the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, in Winsong, a re-subdivision of Track A. Do I submove?
Approved by Councilman Allison, second by Councilman Juwans. Any discussion, any questions? This is resolution R2406-58. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item nine is resolution R2405-38. Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, adopting a plan of services for annexation of three parcels totaling 34.45 plus or minus acres, tax map 137, parcels 007.00 and 007.01 and 007.02. This is located northeast of Lower Station Camp Boulevard and southwest of Big Station Camp Boulevard, and this is providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Allison, opening the floor for questions or discussion. Mr. Juwans.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I think we have, there is an issue with the way we do things, and I think we need to find a better way to do, because we know that's gonna be developed, but right now, the plan of service is done with four units there. So, we're gonna annex a piece of land, and something's gonna happen beyond, which is not gonna be consistent with the plan of service. So, I don't know how we can do that. I know we're following the MTS plan for that, but I think we should have a better, a better way to do thing and do a real plan of service with what's gonna happen more than just what we have.
Anyone else, questions, discussion? This is resolution R2405-38. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
Passes six to one. Item 10 is resolution R2405-39. Councilman Fennell again, please.
This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, annexing three parcels totaling 34.45 plus or minus acres, tax map 137, parcels point oh oh point, excuse me, parcels 007.00, 007.01, and 007.02. This is located northeast of Lower Station Camp Boulevard and southeast of Big Station Camp Boulevard, and to the City of Gallatin, authorizing the annexed property to be indicated on official zoning atlas, assigning the annexed area to a council district, and this is repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Fennell.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hayes, opening the floor for discussion again. Mr. Juwans.
Thank you, Mayor. Same with previous annexation, city is still in default of previous plan of service for past annexation, so I cannot vote yes for that, I will be voting no.
Anyone else with questions, comments? Okay, this is resolution R2405-39. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
Passes six to one. Item 11 is resolution R2405-40. Councilman Allison.
A resolution of the City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, adopting a plan of services for the annexation of three parcels totaling 106.82 acres, tax map 135, parcels 96.01, 97.00, and 998.00, located north of Peach Valley Road and west of Woods Ferry Road, and providing for an effective date. Can I, can I propose discussion first, or don't need?
Make a motion to discuss.
Yeah, a motion to discuss.
A motion to discuss by Councilman Allison. Second. Second by Vice Mayor Love, opening. Sorry, turn my microphone off. A motion by Councilman Allison to discuss, a second by Vice Mayor Love, opening the floor for any discussion.
Well, I'd like to, you know, just begin, I'm obviously very concerned about, you know, our citizens, you know, concerned about that whole area. Obviously, you know, we've passed a first reading for, for the other property that, if I understand correctly, is adjacent to this. So, I just wanted to maybe ask the city staff if that's appropriate, you know, the value of annexing this land and how this fits, you know, this fits in into the plan, and if this is, you know, how this is connected, maybe it's just from my education, to, to the new developments that have been approved are, are being considered.
Mr. Juwans.
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rose.
Just from staff's perspective, this is an actual very important piece of land that needs to get annexed by the city in order to make that whole quadrant of Gallatin able to be functional as far as our roadway system goes. If the city doesn't have control over that land, we don't get to tell someone, you must build a road through that county property. And so, that, that connection from the banks at Lock Four that goes up to Clear Lake Meadows would be virtually impossible without this connection being annexed. So, I would say that is probably the most important reason.
So, if I could make a comment, thank you so much.
Obviously, some developments have already been approved, and I can see and hear the value of this to the city to provide services to both current residents and future residents. Having said that, as I look in growth in that area, me for one, I want us to move slowly and I want us to move carefully, but I don't feel like the annexation tonight means that, that will necessarily be more development. It could be something used for parks. It could be something used for conservation, for the green space. But certainly, having a road, potential road would be important, and I think it's a good thing for the city to be control, in control of that property. And us being in, in control of that property doesn't necessarily mean any intention tonight. That will be a future decision. So with that in mind, I, I so move to accept this.
Motion by Councilman Allison to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion, any questions? Mr. Juwans.
Thank you, Mayor. We're talking about the plan of service, so I have the same comment that before. We know there is already a roadmap for the development and I think I agree with the Clear Lake Meadows extension, but that was what was said initially before the character got changed there. So, but we're going to have to require that to be done. If not, that make no sense. So again, I disagree with the plan of service, the way it's done, so I will be voting no.
Your comments or questions? There, there was a motion to approve and a second. So it's on item number 11, resolution R2405-40. Plan of service annexation. Okay, you're good? Okay. So if y'all are ready to vote, this is resolution R2405-40. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
Does pass six to one. Item number 12 is resolution R2405-41. Again, Councilman Allison.
I'm sorry, you got 13?
12, I'm sorry.
A resolution of the city of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, annexing three parcels located at 106.82 plus acres, map 135 parcel 96, 01, 97 and 98, located north of Peach Valley Road and west of Woods Ferry Road into the city of Gallatin, authorizing the annexed property to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, assigned the annexed area to a council district, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Motion to approve by Councilman Allison.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hayes. Opening the floor for discussion and questions. It is confusing when they're very related, so I understand. Okay, anyone, are, are you, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Same comment that on item 10, for me, I will be voting no for that.
Anyone else? Mrs. Reso.
I'd like to just reiterate the same sentiment I said before. I believe it's important for the city to have control of this, but I also want to be thoughtful in moving forward. And so I look forward to various possibilities with this land from my understanding of it.
Thank you, Councilman Allison. Okay, this is resolution R2405-41. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Does pass six to one. Item number 13 is discussion of conflicting conditions of approval on ordinance 02102-7. City engineer, Mr. Nick Tuttle.
I was asked to put this back on the agenda for more discussion. I know last week, there was a lot of discussion about an approval that was made back in '21 about Twin Eagles Phase 15. And after speaking with our city attorney, Ms. Ha Macaulay, she did ask that, I show a couple of pictures showing some of the issues that we did have earlier this year, showing the, the trouble that, that folks had getting in and out of the neighborhood with the, the storms that occurred. And I know there was a comment made by a citizen about the number of lots, and so I wanted to do a count on that too, just to give you all a more definitive number of lots that we're talking about, because I think we've thrown a lot of numbers out and talked about a couple of hundred or a few hundred or 500 or however many. And so we did count the lots and just wanted to give you that information on what's existing. And so the first slide that I have here shows the section up front where Wildcat Run intersects with Red River Road in the red box, and then Beck's Place cuts over across to Cumberland Point that was referenced earlier tonight. And that section has about 15 houses that have been constructed and are occupied. And that section does have two ways in and out of the neighborhood. But once you move beyond that and you get into the, the back portion of the subdivision, Wildcat Run goes on back in there, you get 481 lots that have one way in and out of, of that neighborhood. The, the yellow arrow that's just a little bit further north is another pinch point that is on Wildcat Run, and that's where the, the flooding occurred. And that pinch point right there, from, from that point back, there's about 355 lots before, I should say, that these, these lot counts are before Phase 15, which is the ordinance that was approved back in 2021. So 355 lots that have, homes that have been built and are occupied that did not have a way in and out during that storm event. So what has been platted and is under construction in Phase 15 right now is another 46 lots. So that's 15A and then another version of 15A that totaled 46 lots. So if I add those 46 lots to the 481 lots, if I do my math correct, that's 527 lots that we have approved. And Jones Construction Company can, can build that without any further approvals from the city other than building permits and certificates of occupancy, which they're entitled to at this point. So what is being considered now is at the planning commission for the next phase. I don't know if they're calling it 15B. I think that may be the, the name of it. And, and they're proposing another 42 lots to get them to that 88 lot number that has been referenced. And so let me show you a couple of pictures that were taken by the citizen at 604 Lily Crest, which was right there at that yellow arrow. And if you've been in the neighborhood, then you probably remember that the Jones Construction model home was this house. And so now it's occupied by a citizen. And you can't tell exactly how deep the water is on the roadway, but this picture shows probably about a 50-foot wide section that has at least a few inches of water across it. And then a couple of, a couple of other pictures where that, that water, that's Wildcat Run, sorry, by the way. And to the left of the, the shrubs on the left side of the page is the, the creek that is running through and crossing Wildcat Run. And this picture shows a little bit deeper water across Wildcat Run. I'm guessing that we're talking somewhere between four to six inches. So again, situation where we would advise people not to, to take a chance and try to drive across that. I don't know if folks did. I'm sure they probably did. But it's, it's a dangerous proposition for folks to, to try to do that. So I did want to, I know we've talked about that and, you know, it could be hearsay. So I wanted to kind of give you a little bit of proof on it and show you what was observed by, by the folks out there. At this point, I'll, I'll turn it over to Ms. Ha Macaulay. I think she had some other things that I know we talked about earlier today she wanted to share.
Would you explain before we kind of move forward, the road that we are discussing that needs to be built, kind of where that is, just so that council understands?
Yes. To, to fit this picture on the slide, I didn't, didn't show the, the full end out to the north. So it actually goes off this page to the north and to the, the west. And so for those that are directionally illiterate, that would be to the top of the page and to the left of the page. And so as you see that right there at the upper left corner, the, the white boundary line that, that comes almost right to the very corner, it would just be just really probably about 100 foot north of that or up from that. And so what is being, what has been proposed with the, the next phase, 15B, would leave us still with a little over 2,000 feet, so almost a half a mile to get out to Douglas Lane with some other third or fourth phase of development. I didn't run the number on how far we are from what's approved right now to what gets us all the way out to Douglas Lane, but I would guess at least another 400 to 600 feet. So getting us close to right at half a mile to get us from what's approved right now today to Douglas Lane. And the, the GIS that is shown here up in that upper left corner, a portion of 15 is already showing up on the GIS. And then just, I guess, the, the most northwest portion that, I wish that, that this pointer worked. I don't know if, if this mouse will, will let me, okay, there we go. So, so this is a portion of 15A that has been approved. And then this block right here, the GIS hasn't been updated, but that, that area right there has been approved. And building permits are being issued and COs are, are being issued there. So, so Dottie Drive would come out from here and curve over and then head, head up to Douglas Lane this way. That was a lot better with the pointer.
And it would be, it would be your opinion that this, this extension is necessary for safety reasons?
Yes, ma'am. And we've said that from the beginning. We said that in.
I just want to get that on the, on the record again.
One, is this development was being considered. Even when we were discussing Phase 14, which was annexed and rezoned years before Phase 15, we were concerned, same concern. Unfortunately, at that point, there, there was no really alternative or ability to get out to Douglas Lane or any other roadway. And so it's one of those where maybe you don't annex, maybe you don't rezone because you don't want to add to a situation, but we, we did do that. 15 was certainly more appropriate because we had the ability to, to then get out to Douglas Lane. So had no problems with, of course, the annexation and the rezoning. It was just the timing of the, the access to get to Douglas Lane.
Well, I'd like to speak since this is my district and, and I've done a lot of research thinking about this. And first of all, I want to say I think we're speaking to something that was a proposal by Councilman Bannon. Is that right? Is this just a discussion on this? Are we speaking on that?
This is just a discussion at this point, yes.
Okay. Well, you know, here are my thoughts. I have, this is one of the few times I have the advantage of not having history here, because it's really plain to me that we need, a road needs to be built. Despite the confusion, I, I listened to the tape. I've, I've considered all that happened in 2021. There's a lot of confusion even on the word phase and the word section that I think that has really turned people all around. And, and I think that's the lack of clarity that, that has confused everybody. But it doesn't change the fact that there's 469 homes that are vulnerable. God forbid this to happen. Tornado, fire, flood. Our people need, need more than one way out. And I understand that, I mean, this, this number 88 has been thrown around, but if you take 88 times two, that's 176. And I've yet to see anyone show me where the number 176 came from. It was just something verbally given at that meeting in '21. I think, I'm no lawyer, but I think that, you know, first of all, it, it's us protecting our citizens, but on a much secondary issue would be a liability for us as a, as a city if we're not providing a way out. We know that there, you have to have two ways out if there's 30 homes built currently. I asked about back in '21, and that was at 50 at the time. So that far surpasses, whether we call it a section or a phase or whatever, far surpasses, you know, being at 469 homes. I was very much impacted by Councilman Carter's words two weeks ago, either last week or two weeks ago, but when he said, "We have to do what's right for the city of Gallatin." And I appreciate you saying that. And it's, it was obvious, but you said it with great, you know, with, with great authority. And, and so that impacted me. So to me, despite all of the history and despite even what we heard from Mr. Alexander today, I think it's just a clear cut. And so I, I'm, I'm going to clearly vote no to this when it comes up.
Well, thank you so much, Councilman Allison. I think you said that very, very well. Appreciate how much that you have picked up already in your short time. And you said, "I'm not a lawyer," but I think lawyers probably go and concur with you. So I think she has some things that she wants to add for the information of this body. And then even, even to the point where you, Mayor, I'll let you speak.
Okay. Do you want me, you want to allow Councilman Juwans to, or me go ahead and speak?
Oh, I didn't know he had something to say. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilman Allison and I agree with Susan. And I look at what was provided to us, and it's on big square red, Exhibit B, where the condition will say, they, they say for one half of the total number of lots within Twin Eagles Phase 15. They don't say 88. They don't say 90, 40. So I think that was, that was pretty clear already there. If the developer change the amount of lot, that is prerogative. That's not us moving the goalpost, okay? He is moving his own goalpost. And again, I listened to my city engineer, we see, we need an exit. I listened to my fire chief who say, "We need an exit." We need to protect our people. And that started and the, the start of the discussion was August 11, 2020, where you were already fighting to get another exit on that development. So it's not new. So we need, we need to do what's right for our citizen, and citizen come from city. So for the city too, we can't, we can't open ourselves to liability knowing there is an issue and we don't do nothing about it. So again, I think that was pretty clear. That was in the Exhibit B, half of the unit, and that's it. It's not.
Ms. Ha Macaulay.
Yes, I just wanted to start by saying I've spent a whole lot of time in the last few weeks, especially this last week. I really researched and was really digging. few weeks, especially this last week, I really researched and was really digging. And as I was thinking about it this weekend, I kept thinking, "Something just doesn't seem right here." And I started thinking about the fact that in, that this was a rezone, and there was a condition of approval that was put on this rezone. And typically, when you have a condition of approval, you're requiring the developer to do something that they wouldn't ordinarily have to do, except that's not what happened here. The, actually, it was the opposite, and so they were allowing almost, it was actually a variance from what was required to do. And I know that at the time, there was, I think everyone remembers, this was a very controversial item, and there were people on Douglas Lane that didn't want that road, and so they tried to reach a compromise, and I understand the rationale behind what was done. However, what they basically did, instead of doing a condition of approval, is they allowed a variance to occur. And I just, I know all of you up here know that one of the very most important things that you have to do as a council and as a city is to protect the health, the safety and welfare of our citizens. And the way that you do that is by adopting ordinances. And we already had an ordinance that was in effect at that time where we had adopted the International Fire Code. And that International Fire Code required at that time that if there are more than 50 homes, you had to have two access points. And so, to me, even if they had added one home, that would have triggered that because there's, as we see, 481 lots. So, council simply did not have the authority to do what they did that night. And it is my legal opinion that the motion, whether, and I know what the motion was, the motion was for half, and then they discussed 88. But regardless of all of that, it doesn't matter because that's void. It's a void action. And it's my legal opinion that that road is required right now. And the reason that we are here trying to decide this is because engineering had, at the Planning Commission, we were at that stage, and engineering was saying, you know, "You've got to have the road, you've got to have the road," and then there was all this confusion about when it was required, and the Fire Code requires it now. I mean, I just don't, I don't know another way around that. I've been asked a question about, well, isn't, doesn't the developer have a property right, a vested property right? And the answer to that is no, because that action is void, so that means it really doesn't have any effect. And I'll also just state on the record that there's a vested property rights act in Tennessee, and safety standards are exempt from vested property rights. So, there is no vested property right in this road being built at a later time. So, my legal opinion after fully researching the issue is that it doesn't matter what happened on May 4th of 2021, and what council intended about that road, and when it intended to be built, at the halfway point or not, but it has to be built now. And I would like for Chuck Stewart, because he is our building official, and he knows a lot more about the Fire Code than I do, that I would like for him to kind of talk to you a little bit about the Fire Code, why we have it, and what it states.
Thank you, Council. The Fire Code is a life safety code. It's all about, that's exactly what it takes care of, is life safety items. The, this road should have been built a long time ago. We have other instances here in town where we're running into some situations, it's going to come before you again for this, but once you pass 30 single-family homes, it requires two entrances, vexes, okay? That's on the single families. Once we go to multi-families, it goes up a little bit before you require those. But that Fire Code is Appendix D, you can search it online, it's the 2018, is the adopted code this time, it's Appendix D, Fire Apparatus Access Code. It's been adopted into law in the City of Galton.
And I would, I'd like to add to that, that the reason that we had, that we adopt these is for uniformity across our city. So, we are not requiring this developer to do anything that any other developer in the city is not required to do. That's the whole point of having these adopted Fire Codes and all of the safety standard codes that we have in the city. And so, we're not trying to require the developer to do something that other developers aren't required to do. I know this developer is a man of integrity, I know he's built here a long time, I understand all of that, but we can't take that into the equation. We have an ordinance, and that, we have to uphold that ordinance. And, you know, so it's my opinion, honestly, that the council doesn't have to take any action tonight. You don't have to decide, it's before you for clarification, you don't have to decide what happened because it doesn't matter because it was void.
And I do think that we have created a circumstance, since an action that Udine Mpropper was taken a few years ago, developers in a difficult position. I mean, what, what at this point is staff or planning or this council supposed to do? Because he, at the very least, has felt like he can build out all of the
Well, I can tell you, I read a case today that talked about something that we were trying to do, and it was in Murray County back in the early 2000s, where someone actually went out and purchased some buildings to store tobacco, which is combustible, and they were required to sprinkle them, and they determined that, no, you know, we're going to give you a variance on, well, the county commission first, the building codes official, and then the Planning Commission determined, no, you know, we're going to allow you to have a variance, and we're going to let you do a bond. And the Court of Appeal said, the council, or not the council, the Planning Commission had absolutely no authority to do that.
So, but my point is, if you back out of the recommendation that came with the plans that came through a few years ago, which was the recommendation that the road be built before that final phase, or those final, I think it was actually six phases began, so where does that put?
Well, we're at half right now, anyway. That's why it came, I mean, that's the whole point. With this, what's, what is before Planning Commission, according to Mr. Tuttle, this is how we arrived here, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the whole point was, with what's before Planning Commission, it is half. So, that was the motion back in 2021, it was half, they're at half now, so I don't know that they're in a much harder, a much more difficult situation than what they should have been. And I'm going to say, if you allow anything other than what our code requires, the city's taking on liability.
What I'm saying is, are they in a situation where they can't get COs until the road's done? Are they in a situation where they can't get further approvals?
That's really not anything this council has to approve. That's something that we can discuss internally.
Okay, I'm sorry to ask. I mean, I just, I feel like we need clarity so that not just
This really shouldn't be before the council.
But not just that the builder, but the residents, you know, have some expectation.
And based on case law that I've read, I do think that, well, I'm going to let, I'm, I know what case law says.
We don't have to consider it here, let's not consider it here, let's talk about
I think that there is a, I've read another case where they didn't allow the CO to be given out. I think, you know, it was half, I think they need to start construction of that. Mr. Stewart's walking up.
Okay, there are situations where we can withhold COs, and we do, we have done it many times, but we get, we get something handed out from council saying, "You can build this many before you put a road in," that ties our hands up. We're done right there.
And it shouldn't in the future because she says we can't do that.
That's correct, and that, to meet the code, this is what you have to do. But it has to be across the whole city. It can't be in one spot or the other, everybody's got to meet the same code.
So, Ms. Haumacalli has said to us tonight that basically the motion to allow for half back when should be null and void, which would mean this council does not have to take any action, but you may if you desire to. Councilman Fan?
I've got a question. This is for the future. Should this have been called in planning or by the council or by
Well, it was. It was fine until it got to council, and then it was at council that this condition of approval was put on. That, I mean, that, and I understand, I'm not disparaging what happened, I understand it was contentious, and they were trying to
Play Kate, marble slang words.
They were, they were trying to come up with a compromise for everyone, they just didn't have the authority to do that. And at the time, it was presented as a condition of approval, it happened at the last reading, it was not something that had been studied and thought about, and it passed, and really there was, you know, nothing that happened, except now we, the city is on notice now. I mean, there has been flooding issues, and then you heard the lady get up here tonight and talk about another man-made where the lines were down and people couldn't get out. So, we are on notice, the city is on notice, that that has happened at least twice, and if we don't take action, the city's the one that's going to be liable.
But we don't need to now to do anything. It's happened, or do we?
I don't think you need to do anything. I would like to see council say, "Yes, we want the road built," it doesn't, but it doesn't matter really what you say. Legally, at Planning Commission, all of this should be taken care of.
Well, it sounds like legally, we don't have a choice. That's what has Like I said, you don't have to do anything for Ms. Haumacalli if you want to take a vote saying
Yeah, I make a, I make a motion.
We're done.
I make a motion that the road got built before any CO got issued.
Well, I think that's actually, I think the, not trying to back you out of your motion, but I think the appropriate thing would be to, heck, I don't know what the right thing is.
Where does this leave the contractor? I guess, one way or the other.
One way or the other, the road has to be built.
Basically, this council does not have to do anything. My first thought when I was saying, "If you want to take action, you can," I was thinking you might make some kind of motion saying that, you know, we formally withdraw the
Would not our
It was done in 20 whatever.
Would not our discussion be public record as far as
Just for my, I should probably know this. I'm sorry, I didn't want to cut in.
Well, back to his motion.
My question is, is a motion appropriate? Do you want us to make a motion?
I don't think it's necessary. I would like just, you know, the only thing I would think, some approval that the road be built, but it really doesn't matter. I don't think that this council needs to take any action because we already have the ordinance, we have the, we have the Fire Code, and I think that we let it resolve that way. And planning and codes will work with Planning Commission and with planning to ensure at this next FMDP stage that this is taken care of.
Deal with that?
Does this, maybe I missed something, but does this mean he doesn't get any more permits until the road's started, or does that leave us?
Well, we're at the place where he would have to for any further approval, that's what they were explaining, but we'll deal with that in planning.
My recommendation as a build official would be, to be fair, we've got things under construction, we carry through until they're completed and COed, but I feel like that this needs to go back to the Planning Commission who starts this thing and hands it down to us. Planning Commission approves another phase, if it needed a road, should not have been approved in Planning Commission and before it ever come down to end up in my office. Building Code is the last one in a project, it goes through Planning Commission, Engineering, planning, back and forth, and then when it's approved, it's handed to me and we build them, okay? So, we've approved these houses that are started now. So, I think to be fair to the builder, go on with those, take them through the CO stage, and then start the process again to
And this is in the process. It's at Planning Commission, it's, has been deferred. That's why it came to you, because there was confusion and controversy about when did the road have to be built, at halfway or after 88? And so, we're already at that stage. We're at the stage, and Mr. Tuttle can probably talk about that at more length than I can and more in depth.
Just so, yeah, just to help with some clarity, the, I'm going to try to highlight this again, this is the area that is part of Phase 15 that has been platted. So, total 46 lots, I don't know how many have been issued building permits or COs at this time, but I know a great number of them do have homes with COs, and I'm sure there's still several more that will be requiring or requesting building permits. I think I understand Mr. Stewart to say that he think, thinks that it is fair to allow those, these platted lots to be able to pull building permits and, of course, then get COs on them. Hopefully, I'm not putting words in his mouth, but, so what's at the Planning Commission now is the next phase of this, which would go into this property that's just to the north of Phase 15A, and that would be, so 46 lots here, and the proposal that the Planning Commission is considering is another 42 lots, and that's Phase 15B, I think, is what they may be calling it.
That's correct.
Okay. So, that's what Mr. Stewart is really talking about.
And I want to make sure I'm correct, it's the 15A that you're saying he gets the permits for, not 15B, because those haven't been
Correct, yeah, the 15B is, you know, the FMDP is what is at the Planning Commission right now, the Final Master Development Plan. So, he's getting that now, and I think it's preliminary plat, I would assume, is there as well with it. So, no platting has been done, or it's all under the same common ownership. If you were to maybe pull the plug on 15A, those two sections in 15A, then I'm assuming that the lots that are undeveloped are still owned by Jones Construction, just because that's the way they do business, but it could be a situation where if you were to say, you know, just pull the plug, you could have different property owners that you're affecting that would have really had no, no ability to affect anything that had already been approved, they would be buying a lot that they thought that they were able to build on and then wouldn't be able to build on at that point. So, it would be, that would probably be a move in the goalpost, if I could step out a little bit on the edge to say that.
Can, let me ask, and is, am I, am I correct in assuming that a lot of these lots was permitted back in the day before the ordinance changed? How did we get 481 houses?
Don't ask.
For the entire subdivision of Twin Eagles, that is correct, yeah. Mr. Stewart could speak probably a little more intelligently on when we adopted the specific lot count on the Fire Code, but we used to not have a number. It was just, it was maybe
I think in 15, 2015.
And this development
When I was researching, in 2015, I think Mr. Stewart and I were both very new, and he was starting to update the Fire Code and adopting Appendix D, and I think at that time, it was 100. And then, I think in 2018, it went to 50, and then in '22, it went to 30.
And before 2015, there was no number?
That's my, that's my understanding.
I believe that's true, and we're talking about development that's been going on for 25 years.
It was brought to my attention by someone earlier today, if we remember the fires that happened in Pigeon Forge or Gatlinburg, I guess is correct to say, that some people actually lost their lives because they couldn't get out of the neighborhood.
True.
Yep, that was a one-way-in-and-one-way-out subdivision.
But still, I mean, we had an explosion in Gallatin.
We had an explosion, we've heard that lines came down, we have tornadoes, accidents, I mean, there are a lot of, a lot of things that can happen, floods.
Certainly.
Maybe we should require if I have a lot of traffic by the
Very funny. Did you have something?
Yeah, my, my only concern, I understand what Chuck said and what Nick said, but my only concern is that if we say at the next phase, you have to build a road, and he decides to pull the plug, we don't have a road. So, where we go from there?
I think at that point, the city's going to be required to build a road.
All right, that's going to conclude the regular agenda, and we'll move now to other business. I meant to comment after public comment at the beginning of the meeting and the gentleman's left, but he did ask the question about, it's related to the Hicks Lane annexation, his question under the public hearing, I guess before the public hearing, was related to would it affect his property, would his property be annexed? And I know people always are in fear that somehow their property gets included, but I'm state law does not allow for the City of Gallatin or any city in the state of Tennessee to annex property without very strict criteria, primarily for most cities doing annexations. It would be upon owner request. And so I don't know if he left here and is listening to it. I kind of doubt it, but he'd had enough and left. If anyone has the opportunity to relay that to him, I'd appreciate it. I just did want to answer that for him. I don't have any other business myself this evening. Councilman Fennell, I guess you do.
Not much. I just want to, today I rode over into Triple Creek Park, and I guess it was at 2:00. It was plum full of people. And I was told it was 17 states that was recognized.
I forgot something very important at the beginning of the meeting.
Good gosh, it was a lot of people. I mean, it was as far as from Pennsylvania, and I seen packs from Oklahoma. I know that the markets have been doing really well. I'm glad to see this happening in Gallatin. I'm proud of that. And it's just welcome to the people. I seen people underneath trees, sitting on hillsides, using our parks. I mean, it's just...
I can tell you why this is. And I was supposed to announce at the beginning of the meeting, and I failed miserably, so...
Well, I'm glad I got to get a good plug.
Well, I'm glad you did. I'm glad you prompted me. Mr. Brown had not texted me to remind me, so...
However, I want to say another thing, too.
Okay.
Our pickleball courts need to be fixed.
Yes, I'm well aware. We've heard a lot about that.
I just sent an email on that. Okay.
Yeah, I've heard a lot about those. Yes, the Parks Department is hosting the USSSA Fast Pitch National Championship this week. The tournament started today. It goes through Friday, the 19th. It's at Triple Creek. So far, they've identified 17 state license plates, and would like to ask everyone to welcome these visitors to our town and show them why Gallatin was voted the nicest town in America. Robbie Riley, my apologies. It was on a separate piece of paper, and it was mixed in with others in my regular calendar. That is what so many people are here for, and I seriously would say please make them feel welcome. Congratulations to the Parks for acquiring this tournament. It's a big deal for Gallatin. It's a big deal for our businesses. And help them feel welcome. Mr. Javon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm building on you. I would like to update because we, you know, Salkar is the majority of people we have. So do we have an update on the land we were looking at to buy for Salkar? Because...
We have an appraisal. We're waiting on guidance from the Corps.
Thank you, Mayor. And about the, I know Susan has been busy with that, but the resolution we were talking about for the money, the IDB and Meta, where are we with that?
Yeah, they passed something at IDB level, but I didn't bring it.
Yeah, they did pass. I'll get it, I know that, I think you have a copy, and we can bring that for going forward.
And what was he, I'm, I'm, I'm misunderstanding. What was he talking about?
He wanted, it had to do with IDB and their distribution of funds related to the meta pilot. And the IDB Board has taken action to address that. I don't know that it requires us to take action because it's their action, but we'll relay it to y'all, so...
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else with any other business? I know that our building departments are still, they've been a little busy with trying to figure out fee structures, so that will come in time when they have that opportunity. All right, we'll move now to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. That means if you have an item that you'd like to speak to that's not on the evening's agenda, I'd invite you to at this time. Again, you have five minutes. We need your name, your address for the record. Public recognition on non-agenda-related items is now open.
Motion to adjourn.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I see no one standing to speak, so I'll declare public recognition on non-agenda-related items closed.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Fennell, second by Vice Mayor Love. All in favor, say aye. Ladies and gentlemen, I hope you have, it's non-debatable. It's the end of the agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, I hope you have a lovely evening. Take care. Be kind to one another. Good night.
See you.